Good evening, everyone, commissioners. So, tonight, the first matter will take roll call.
All right. Oh, sorry. A little loud. Acosta?
Present.
Dodge? Raden? Rojas? Sension? Vega?
Here.
Beach Olson?
Here.
We have Quorum.
Yeah, motion to excuse planning commissioners, if any?
Two. Reported absent. Chair Dodge? Yeah? I haven't seen an email from Raden.
So, we can wait while the clerk checks the emails to see if Commissioner Sension sent something in about his absence.
Yes, he did. I just saw that he emailed this morning that he was going to be absent for today's planning commission meeting. If we can go ahead and say that with the microphones on, just so that we can get the audio and the video. Thank you.
I'll move to excuse Commissioners Dodge, Brando, sorry, Sension, and Raden.
Okay.
And also Daniel Dodge, Sr. Could you amend the motion? It was all three?
Yes, it was.
I said Dodge.
Oh, okay. I'll second it. It's all three.
I'll approve. Motion and second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
All right, we will leave a pledge of allegiance. If I can get somebody to lead in the pledge of allegiance. Great. Martha?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we have presentations and oral communication. At this time, time is set aside for members of the general public to address the planning commission on any items on the agenda which is within the subject matter judicial to the planning commission. No actions or discussion shall be taken on any items present except that any commissioners may respond to the statement made or questions asked, or maybe ask any questions for clarification. All matters in administrative matter will be referred to staff. All matters relating to planning commission will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled to discussion at a further meeting or refer to staff for clarification and report. Any commissioner may place matters brought up under oral communication on future agenda. All speakers are asked to announce their name in order to obtain the accurate record for the minutes. So, at this point, with oral communication from the public, is open? We have anybody from the public? All right, so we move on to oral communication from the commissioners. Boy, everybody's quiet this evening. All right, here we go. All right, so consent agenda. Sure. Yeah, yeah. All items, so this is where, okay, appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions which are considered to be routine and would be acted upon as one consent of motion and any removed, I'm sorry, any items removed will be considered immediately after the consent of motion, consent of motion. All chair will be allowed public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. And, there we go. And we have, this is public input, so motion approving minutes on September 5, 2023, and November 7, 2023.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September 5 and November 7 of this year.
Go second.
Sure, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chair, before we take the motion, we need to just confirm there's no public comment on this item?
Sir, any public comment on this item? So, I think we had first and a second. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed.
All right, so we have a consideration of approval of a special use permit and design review permit. It's PP 2023-5966 to allow the construction of a car and truck rental business on a .95 acre parcel located at 1926 Freedom Boulevard, APN 014-032-17 in recommendation to the city. COU staff report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Acosta. Planning commissioners, good evening. We are here tonight to discuss a proposed car and truck rental business located at 1926 Freedom Boulevard. So, I'll start by just getting everyone familiar with the surroundings of the parcel. So, this is the view from Freedom Boulevard northeast. What you see here on the left is the Vista Verde Early Education Center, the existing office building in the middle, Crystal Laundromat on the right, and I will note that there is no curb gutter and sidewalk or landscaping strip there along Freedom Boulevard. And then the view from the rear side where this lot fronts Quinn Avenue, where you'll see the same existing office building in the middle, affordable housing located outside the city limits in the county to the right, and then an additional residential development, a single-family home along Quinn Avenue on the left-hand side, and also no curb gutter, sidewalk, or landscape strip in this area. So, here's the view from above, all the things I mentioned before, affordable housing in the county, Vista Verde, Freedom Boulevard, Quinn Avenue. The parcel stretches between the two and is surrounded by commercial and residential on both the Freedom Boulevard frontage and the Quinn Avenue frontage. The lot has dual general plan land use classifications and zoning designations. So, on the rear portion of the lot shown here in yellow, it has a residential low-density general plan classification, and it's zoned R1, whereas on the front portion of the lot, it has general commercial, general plan land use designation, and commercial thoroughfare zoning. This is just one legal parcel with dual zoning, which is something cities never want to have. This is sort of an error that needs to be corrected over time when these things pop up, and this is a remnant from pre-annexation time when this was located in the county. In addition, this lot is located in Airport Safety Zone 2. Airport Safety Zone 2 is a high-risk level airport safety zone, and that results in a maximum residential density of one unit per 10 to 20 acres, which is very, very low density, and then has a maximum non-residential intensity of 40 to 60 people per acre. Actually, before I move on from that, what this means is that non-residential uses are really, really limited in terms to ones that attract very, very few people. So, this would be, you know, light industrial uses, warehouses, storage units, single-story office buildings, or things like car rental lots where you have a very small number of people, a very small number of customers congregated in the site where a plane to crash. And what you have to avoid and prohibit are things that attract lots of folks, such as, you know, restaurants, group uses, like recreational sports facilities, assembly uses, theaters, shopping centers, et cetera, which makes the zoning here, the commercial zoning here, very problematic. A lot of the people that we've talked to over the years regarding this parcel were very interested in doing all of the things in that avoid/prohibit list, and so we were waiting for someone to come along who had a very low-intensity use that would work with this airport safety zone, and now we have one that does. And just an example of what one unit per 10 to 20 acres looks like, this is the Menabial specific plan area. This is 10 acres, the entirety of the land to the right of Aloney Parkway. This is 20 acres, the two together, and then this is what's located at 1926 Freedom Boulevard in the residential portion of the lot. So, I think that helps to see what would be allowed and why residential is not a good fit on the backside. Yeah? Sorry, I'm usually so loud, I'm trying to keep it at arm's length. Thank you. Thank you for letting me know. So, moving on, this is not technically today's view, this is last evening's view from Freedom Boulevard and Quinn Avenue. I always like to have the most up-to-date photos we can here. Assistant Associate Planner Ivan Carmona went out there and took a picture so that you can see that essentially exactly what you see on the GIS satellite view and the street views on Google are pretty much accurate to what's there today. So, what does this project propose? The project includes a remodel of the existing 528-square-foot office building, which you can see here kind of in the middle. It also proposes to construct a new 578-square-foot carport, which is in that sort of northeastern corner, as well as a new 213-square-foot trash enclosure, which is just south of the existing office building. There's also obviously a parking lot with 19 customer spaces and then 24 spaces for rental cars and trucks. It also includes 12,682 square feet of new landscaping, which is 32% of the lot, and that includes 24 new trees and a 10-foot-wide landscaping strip between the rear fence and Quinn Avenue to kind of provide a buffer between this commercial use and the existing residential uses along Quinn Avenue, as well as three trees in a landscaping strip along Freedom Boulevard that continues the existing landscaping strip next door at Vista Verde along Freedom Boulevard. In addition, there's also a 1,820-square-foot stormwater bio-retention area that you see here in green. So, it's relatively small in terms of the structures being constructed as part of this project. As you see here, the elevations for the office building on the left, it's very basic, you know, square, one-story office building, you know, composite shingle roof, a couple windows and a door. The carport, also very basic, this will be used as a car wash area, actually, and will be bermed so that stormwater from this goes to a sand and mud interceptor prior to going into the sanitary sewer. And then you have the trash enclosure elevations here, which show the City of Watsonville's standard trash enclosure design. This proposed use requires a special use permit and design review permit. Staff reviewed the proposed project for consistency with the findings for both special use permits and design review permits and found it to be consistent with those. Some of the highlights of those findings include the fact that, as I mentioned earlier, it is very low-intensity use. The improvements complement the surrounding commercial and residential structures in the neighborhood. Traffic is much less than what would be allowed with a higher-intensity use in a normal commercial thoroughfare zoning district due to the fact that it's an airport safety zone 2. As I mentioned previously, there's a lot of landscaping improvements, including along Freedom Boulevard, Quinn Avenue, as well as the perimeter of the site. There's also new curb gutter and sidewalk that will be installed along Freedom Boulevard. And in addition, I worked very closely with the applicant to review their photometric plan to make sure that there were not negative light impacts on the neighboring properties, and we got it to a point where there's, it never exceeds, the lighting never exceeds .5-foot candles at any lot line bordering a residential property, which is what the city guns for. And I should point out, too, that the planning commission type is the decision-making body on the special use permit and the design review permit, but not the next item that we're going to go over, which is the general plan land use and zoning map amendments. So, as I mentioned earlier, there is the dual general plan land use classification and zoning on this property. In order for this development to go forward, it needs a general plan land use map amendment and a zoning amendment to make the entire parcel general commercial. That's a decision that has to be made by the city council, so tonight, what you're being asked to do is make a recommendation to the city council on that change in classification. So, for both the special use permit, the design review, the general map land use amendment, and the zoning map amendment, you have to make a finding of general plan consistency. So, staff reviewed the proposed project under the 2005, I wish Chairman Dodge was here so I could point out, yes, 2005 general plan. I'm just conditioned now, sorry. So, if we did review and it was consistent with multiple policies and implementation measures under that plan, so some of those are listed here, and those are located in Exhibit A of the resolution for the special use permit that you'll be looking at, considering tonight, as well as the recommended resolutions to city council. In addition, of course, we do the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, review. So, the portion you'll be approving tonight qualifies for a CEQA infill exemption, which is a Class 32 exemption under Section 15332, and we determine that by making sure it meets the findings in the subsections of that, and it does, and those are included in Exhibit A of the resolution tonight. In addition, the general plan land use map amendment and the zoning map amendment qualify for a common sense exemption because it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that changing the designation on the map, the act of doing that, could have a significant effect on the environment. So, with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the special use permit and design review permit, subject to the conditions of approval, there's 53 conditions of approval included, and contingent upon the city council approval of the general plan map amendment and the zoning map amendment to allow construction of a car and truck rental business at 1926 Freedom Boulevard, and finding the project categorically exempt from CEQA under Section 15332, as well as adopting resolutions recommending that the city council approve a general plan map amendment and zoning map amendment. So, with that, I'll hand it back to you for discussion. We also have, I should point out, representatives of the project here tonight. We have David Howe and Kyle Dalton here in the front row, who can represent the property owner and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your staff report. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to the planning commission for clarifying their technical questions. Commissioner Rojas?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. I just wanted to confirm, I think it's like implied, but there's going to be no through traffic to Quinn Avenue, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so the entrance and exit will just be from Freedom?
Yes.
Okay. And then it mentions landscaping, will there be like a fence as well?
Yes, there's a new six-foot fence that'll go around the majority of the property. There will be no fence in the first, I think, the 15-foot setback area, so they could potentially have a three-and-a-half-foot tall fence there if they wanted to, but I believe they're just going to have the six-foot fence going around the other property boundaries.
Okay. Okay. I think that was my only question. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
I'll ask a question. Were the residents notified of the development? Okay.
Yeah, we did the normal notification of all adjacent properties in the vicinity.
Okay.
I just, would you clarify once again why we are considering the special use permit this evening, but ultimately it is still contingent upon council approving the project since that is a little bit out of order for what we regularly do here at Planning Commission?
I can respond.
Thank you.
Thanks. Denise Pozano, Assistant City Attorney. So, the general plan and zoning map amendments are legislative decisions, and those are only within the purview of the council. The special use permit and the design review permit are within the purview of the planning commission, so that's why the planning commission makes its decision, but it is contingent upon the amendments that council will make, could make, to the general plan and the zoning map.
Right, so even if we make a recommendation to approve the special use permit this evening, then it goes before council. Should council not approve the project, then?
The special use permit and the design review permit would be void because that contingency wasn't satisfied.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions from the commissioners, clarifying questions? Sure.
Olson's question, so from an efficiency perspective, why does the workflow go like that? Why doesn't it go to the city council first?
That's just the way it's been designated in the code, so that's what the procedure that we follow. Other jurisdictions can sometimes do it differently, but typically, the council wants to hear from the planning commission before they make any determination, so it's a, what came first, the chicken or the egg type thing?
Just to further clarify, let's say if this were just a rezoning and general plan amendment, it would still come to the planning commission for recommendation before going to council. It's just, in this instance, the use permit and design review can be approved by planning commission.
So, if I may, this is just a recommendation, that's all we're doing here, it's just a recommendation.
Not for the use permit and design review?
Right, not for that, yes, but the other piece that we're talking about.
Yeah, the rezoning and general plan amendment, yes.
Correct.
Are we able to hear from the applicant?
Well, hold on.
Okay.
Commissioner Rojas, I'll go, and then I'll go right back to you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I have one more question for staff. So, in your presentation, you mentioned that this parcel is in a dual zoning situation and that there are others, like, how many other, like, what percentage of our parcels in town would you say are in this situation?
I don't think too many at this point. This is something that cities generally clean up over time due to, you know, these things happen because of, you know, GIS errors. Sometimes they happen, you know, come up during annexations where you're taking over, you know, land from a county. There's lots of different reasons why it would happen, but they generally don't get corrected unless you do something in one fell swoop. I know in, once in Capitola, we did that with our zoning map where we updated and just, we had identified all the different ones in the city that were off and then, you know, corrected them in one fell swoop. But here, in this case, you know, this was just one that we can correct one at a time.
Thank you, that's helpful to understand that process.
And the applicant does have a short oral presentation, too, so you will hear more from the applicant.
Commissioner Vega?
I was wondering if we were able to listen from the applicant?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I was wondering if we could listen, have some words, if we could hear from the applicant?
That's next, yes, we're going to go there next, yes, I just want to make sure we're, okay, so we're going to move on. We're going to move on to the applications presentation, the applicant's presentation? You have one? No applicant?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. That's all right.
Hi, my name is Kyle Dalton, and I'm one of the principals in this project. Thank you for being here tonight and for looking at this project. I also want to thank Matt and the staff and the department for really helping us with clarity, understanding what Watsonville wants to see, the city itself, for successful projects. As you probably are aware, they've gone through a lot of staffing changes, pretty significant in the last few months, and these guys have hung in there and stayed focused to try to bring this to you in the year 2023, and so we're very thankful for that. Now, the project itself, sometimes it's been referred to us as the eyesore of Freedom Boulevard, considering it's been a vacant lot for a couple of decades prior to being a, way back in the day, RV rentals, rental business. And many projects have been suggested here. Matt sort of alluded to some of its challenges, one of them being a car wash, a dollar store, an imaging center, and all of them have not been successful in going forward for various reasons. So, we feel like this is a benefit for the community in terms of its appearance, we feel it's a benefit to the folks in the neighborhood. We've had a couple of folks in the neighborhood, without any reason, come up to us and say how excited they are to see that this lot is finally going to get a form. If you may know or not, sometimes a lot of transients tend to leave shopping carts and trash in this lot, and so it has to be cleaned up, and so from that standpoint, I can see why they would be excited about something happening here. Other benefits that we see for this project is the businesses, tourism. The current company that is our client has a small, very small rental business in the city right now, and they have been looking for almost the last seven, eight years to find a larger location, but they want to be able to take advantage of the tourism opportunities that are coming to Watsonville with all the great growth that's going on here, so they need to have more cars, and they don't have the space in order to do that. And then we add the second piece of it, which is the boxcar rental business, which is going to be helping their ag business. They have reached out to some of their clients already that they deal with, they do 80% of their business for their boxcar business in the city of Watsonville through the ag business, so they're excited about being able to take advantage of a closer location. Also, the new distribution center that's going in is going to be able to take advantage of the boxcar rental business, so there's a lot of, I see positives across the board. There was a, American Car Association put out a report in 2019 that attributed car rental business had given, had allowed $26 billion of monies to flow into federal, state, and local coffers, so we see that benefit also in terms of the receipts that will come off of this business from the car rental and the boxcar. So, we're very excited to be able to bring this to the city of Watsonville. And that's all I have. I would say one other thing, I just thought of it, since I'm going from my thoughts. I was here several months ago and was in front of the Watsonville Airport Advisory Committee, and they were all in the same situation as you are and were very positive to what we had shared, considering that we're in Zone 2, we thought it was appropriate with the director, Ray Vaughn, to come and talk to them. So, we're doing what we think is important and correct for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to take it back to the commissioners for any clarifying technical questions. Yeah? Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, I have a few questions. Well, first, I want to thank you for bringing forward a project that is feasible within the airport zoning, because we have found that that's sometimes difficult, you know, to develop projects, so thank you for that. I wanted to know, does the owner, do they plan to close the other site that's in Watsonville, the other enterprise location, when they open this one?
Yeah, the car rental one will close.
The car rental, okay. And so, will there be any, like, net positive of jobs in terms of the new location?
There will be because the boxcar rental business will also, you know, that's a sort of a different revenue stream for the company, and they have their own system and process, so they have employees, so it'll be a plus in that sense.
Okay, so do you know how many new jobs will be generated?
Well, I think four to five is what we're suggesting, based on comments from them.
Okay.
So, again, it's a low-intensity business for the most part, for labor.
Okay, and then any information you can share about the current, the business owners' community engagement?
The what?
Their engagement with the Watsonville community?
I wouldn't be able to speak for them on that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the commissioner?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to confirm that the employees that are currently at the current site will be transitioning over to Freedom.
Oh, definitely.
And then they'll continue business as is, continuing to rent cars for our community and?
Yeah, well, the space will be slightly larger with more cars, so they're going to be hiring more people to cover that additional car usage. So in, the company's really good about moving people around from, you know, we have tri-county area that they tend to do training and cross-training and make sure their employees are, you know, up to speed. So yes, I can confirm that 100% that everybody that's in that facility now will be in the new facility, but they will be adding additional staff and assistant management-type staff for training purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or clarifying?
I just wanted to thank you for the presentation.
Well, thank you.
I, you know, I just wanted to add, because I heard the closing of the other location, I did kind of get it, that, you know, the staff would probably more than likely move over there. And, you know, it's great, more, you know, obviously more staff to that location and look forward to something like that in the city of Watsonville.
Any other questions?
One more. Are you thinking of expanding the hours to Saturdays and Sundays possibly in the future? What's your, what's your vision?
It depends on the demand that would drive that. I know they will definitely do Saturday, which they don't currently do. They're challenged at that location for several reasons, and we, this new location offers a solution for that. So that would be my, but yes.
Wonderful.
I don't know about Sunday, you know, I don't know if they would, I think it really is driven around, the Sunday piece would be driven around the need for cars tourism-wise, right? But boxcar rental business, it wouldn't, there would never be a need for a Sunday situation.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Technical clarification? No? Okay, at this point, I'd like to move over to public hearing. Anyone from the public? Okay, at this point, no. I'd like to bring a public, close to public hearing and bring it back for appropriate motion from the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that there is a revised agenda that was published, and at the dais and available to the public is a revised first page of the agenda report that has the full title. There was a technical glitch with the original publication, and so the full title wasn't published, but this corrects that, and that's before the planning commissioners.
Can we give the commissioners a minute just in case they haven't, it's up on the screen?
It just, the recommendation on the slide just reiterates what's in the revised agenda report.
Right. Commissioner Rojas?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special use permit and design review permit subject to conditions of approval and contingent upon city council approval of a general plan map amendment and zoning map amendment to allow construction of a car and truck rental business on a 0.95 acre site located at 1926 Freedom Boulevard, and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15332, and that we adopt the resolutions recommending that the city council approve a general plan map amendment and zoning map amendment.
We have a motion from Commissioner Rojas?
I'll second it.
You have a second from Commissioner Vega?
Yes. Could I point something out? On the agenda report that our attorney just indicated, there's a spelling where it says city council? If that could be amended, thank you.
Yep, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a roll call?
Okay. Acosta?
Yes?
Rojas?
Yes.
Vega?
Yes.
Peach Olson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, so we have deliberation?
No, we're done.
Done, we're done. So we go into?
Congratulations.
Yeah, great. Congratulations. Yeah, report from the secretary.
Good evening. I really don't have anything to report, but I want to wish everyone a happy holiday. And our next scheduled Planning Commission meeting is January 9th, 2024. We will let you know if we don't have any items for that meeting. So I just want to say happy holidays and happy new year if I don't see you before then. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you need a motion to close or adjourn? No, just close?
So I adjourn the meeting. We're done.